Okay, call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. In accordance with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 38, this meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted with some remote participation. While in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted and welcomed, and a quorum of the school committee will be in person, this meeting is concurrently being presented through a Google Meet, trying a new way of doing it today, and via live broadcast from NORCAM. So, anybody from the public, either at home or here, can participate, and school committee members who may not be able to participate can as well. We do have everybody in person today, so welcome. We'll start with public comment, and that's where you've come to learn, public, if they have any comments, or questions, or thoughts, they're welcome to bring them. You have three minutes for public comments. If anybody from the public that would like to comment. Okay. One, go ahead, sir, please, announce your name and address.
Do you have any microphones?
Pass that up.
Drew DePatty, 6 Flint Street. This evening, I'm raising concerns about the process of reporting racist incidents at North Reading Public Schools. I have concerns with the process and incident reporting up the chain of command, how it is triaged by senior staff, and when, why, and how it is communicated to parents. In an email from Dr. Daly dated March 12th, he communicated that a racial epithet was written on a bathroom stall. He provided resources to middle school families related to race, and he asked that these incidents be reported so they can be investigated, like that one. It's surely quite a coincidence that this incident happened just before a big rollout of new ideas in the social justice and diversity equity and inclusion program this spring. The timing of this reminds me of several faked hate crimes in the recent past, the most recent one being Jussie Smollett, who famously faked an attack on himself while the attackers supposedly yelled gay and racial slurs at him. On March 10th, he was sentenced to five months in jail after being found guilty on five counts of felony disorderly conduct for staging the hate crime. The other one is from a Massachusetts high school, which obviously makes it more relevant, 45 minutes down the road. In 2013, in Lunenburg, Massachusetts, the falling was spray painted on the home of a biracial high school football player. Quote, "Knights don't need N-words," knights being the mascot of the school, the N-word being the racial epithet. The mom of the high schooler said it was the football team that did this. She claimed they had been giving her son a hard time. Much like this administration, the Lunenburg school administrators sprung into action and canceled the rest of the football season right away. They wanted to make it known that these incidents would not be tolerated and would be dealt with swiftly. Of course, this incident led to an enormous amount of strife and division within the community and even created national attention. The police were called to investigate. To make a much longer story short, the mom staged a hate crime. You may ask, why would a person fake a hate crime? The answer is simple, to push a personal or political agenda. These two examples likely represent one of each. Now, do some school administrators, teachers, staff, or students at North Reading Public Schools have a political agenda to push DEI and social justice programming? I think the answer is a strong yes. Are there some students that have radical views about race, such as their belief that, quote, "All of North Reading is racist"? Have these beliefs even become part of their identity after all this worldview was on display at the high school graduation ceremony in 2020? An investigator might call this motive. Now, is it possible a Miss Davis boy went into the 7th grade bathroom and did this to stir things up in the community? Of course, that's possible. It does seem out of character for the school system, and I wonder how many incidents like this have been reported over time? But yes, it's possible. As part of a thorough investigation, it is important to take into account the possibility of a fake incident, and it is equally important to communicate this possibility and this dynamic to the parents. Wouldn't it have been appropriate to include in Dr. Daly's email the possibility that this was a fake event designed to show that there is racism in school and therefore that we need to accelerate DEI and social justice programming? Now, I know that the school committee has an oversight role, and you're much better at that and much more experienced than me, but I do encourage you to ask in this public forum tonight, the school administrators, a few questions. How specifically did you determine the perpetrator's motives? And if the perpetrator told you, did you take his word for it? Thank you.
We've had a few incidents that we have been reported to the middle school administration. They've been investigated very thoroughly. I know that Dr. O'Connell spent the better part of two weeks investigating these incidents. They absolutely happened. I actually saw the word in one case. I saw all the reports and all the information, the interviews, so I don't know what else to say.
If anyone has an incident, they should report it, and they should, they will be investigated, period. Any other comments, public comments?
So you believe them?
Sir, your three minutes is done. Any other comments from anybody, public comments? We move on. Thank you. We have the student report tonight. We have Sophia Galapo here. Sophia, would you like to begin?
Thank you so much for having me. I'm gonna start with academic matters. Freshmen are finishing their course selection. Sophomores had MCAS last week. Select juniors and seniors are applying for NHS, and seniors are starting to commit to colleges. We've had a lot of success lately in the arts. The district-wide art show will begin next week. Mascar's won the preliminary round for METG Drama Fest with their festival piece, The Terrible Infants. They won four individual acting awards, as well as four specialty awards. Jazz Band won bronze at their competition in Reading. Notorious broke the point record in their competition for the quarterfinal at ICHSA with a total point count of 452 points. This made them allowed to go on to performing at Mechanics Hall in Worcester, and this is where they placed first. Now they'll be performing in New York for the final round on April 22nd against top a cappella groups worldwide. Notorious is hosting an a cappella festival, April 14th, called Sing Fling. Mascar's will host the regional round for Drama Fest on April 2nd. They'll be performing at 9:30 for everyone, for anyone and everyone interested in attending. They'll also have a free public performance in the PAC this Thursday at 4:15. Athletics is actually in a kind of quiet period with the switching of sports, but since our last meeting, winter sports have ended, and we've had a lot of success there. Boys and girls tracks and athletes to New York for nationals. Their freshman, Juliana Legore, placed fifth in the nation for the freshman 400-meter sprint. Boys and girls hockey, as well as boys and girls basketball, made the second round for the state tournament. And all sports teams finished their seasons very strong. These athletes were all celebrated at sports awards, where some were even honored with league and state recognitions. Spring sports have begun. All sports have been working through their pre-seasons, and competition won't start for a few weeks. Last week, on Friday, boys and girls lacrosse teams attended a sportsmanship summit at Gillette And in other topics, the freshman sophomore semi is this Friday, and it will be a senior class fundraiser. ECO Team is holding an event through a nonprofit organization called Tree Plenish. This event will be on April 10th, and it's a coordination of tree planting to help reduce our school's carbon footprint, and that number of trees planted is coordinated with the amount of paper consumption at our school. Interact is hosting a clothing drive starting this week. The Social Activism Club is working on a PSA for community peace. And SLAM has begun selecting new mentors for next year. And for my student work report, I want to just briefly talk about this genetics lab I've been working on for about a month now. This lab works with skills in gel electrophoresis to identify foreign substances, as well as mock virus identification. This lab allows us to delve into foundational ideas for classification of DNA based on fragment sizes in comparison to electrical currents, as well as it gives us more tactile skills like micropipetting. So it was broken down into two, actually multiple investigations, but two major parts, one being a design construction, where we built our own chambers using household materials, and the other using professional materials. And this was actually coordinated through a new organization that our science department has begun working with called Mini PCR. And in this series of labs, it allows us to learn about these ideas, to classify and identify each fragment in comparison to the other fragments being looked at. So our mock investigation we held was based on identifying which patient has a specific virus, and it allows us to look at how this is used in the real world.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, thoughts? Janine?
I just felt like gave me a college detour. Oh my gosh, we used to have little beakers and actual flame, you know? So, it's very interesting. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Sophia, is science something you're interested in pursuing?
Yeah, I'm hoping to study environmental science next year.
Awesome.
And are you gonna share with us if you have any news on your next year?
I just got into my top school, and I'll leave it at that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we'll go to the guests that are here today. And first, we're gonna begin with the Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School presentation, and we have Ms. Judy Diamond here and Superintendent Dave DeBarry. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to meeting with the North Reading School Committee every year. Can't believe it's already been a year. Dave and I personally take pleasure tonight in thanking all of you for your support for the new school. You were incredible, and we really appreciated everything you did on behalf of our school. We're also, I'm very proud to represent North Reading, I have to tell you. I was just standing out the polls all day. It's amazing how many people came in and out. We could feel the vibes of the positive, you know, we could just feel the support, and that was very important to us. But I'm also to great pride at our school committee meeting that to announce that North Reading was the town with the highest percentage of yes votes. So that in itself speaks highly for the value of education, the town of North Reading, and we really appreciate it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have as to where we are right now with the new school, which isn't very far, actually, as you can imagine. But Dave and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
When do you break ground?
So, in fact, today was the first time we went over what the schedule might look like. So we're looking at next February is when we would begin to clear some of the trees and blast some of the rocks. Right now, we're really looking at, as you can expect, the design, which has been a real boost to the morale for our teachers, especially our shop teachers, to be able to design their shop space and be a part of, you know, something that's going to be hopefully for a lot longer than 50 years, has been great. So we're already walking on air, and I know it's been, well, it's been almost nine years since this began, so we might have two, two and a half years, which seems long to some people, but we know that it flies by, so it's a very exciting time. Currently, we're working closely with some local environmental and sustainability groups, so that's really been one of our focuses from day one. And we're trying to do as much as we can to not disturb the environment. As you know, we're right next to Bracott Reservation, which is a beautiful area. And we picked a spot that was mostly ledge, so we, you know, we feel like the disruption, except for when they're blasting, is going to be minimal. But it's very important for us to make sure that we keep track of replanting trees that are coming down, and I think we're doing something that is pretty original. We actually bought some milling equipment, so the trees that do come down, it is our intent to save them and to turn that into wood that we can use for projects at the school, at Bracott, and hopefully within the district. So, as you know from your own projects, it's a lot of work, but it's still positive. Hopefully, next year, if I come with bags under my eyes, it'll, it'll still be the case, but I did wanna echo what Ms. Diamond said, that North Reading, again, was the first town not only to have such great votes, but you were the first ones to vote yes when we came to town meeting. And that was very important, and that sent a message to a lot of the towns. And even though we did have to go to a ballot, it meant a lot to us that your citizens got up and supported us. So I wanted to thank anybody who's watching out there who was part of that meeting.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Questions? And I'll just say, it's a worthy project. We've talked about it many times up here. I was very, very happy. I was a little surprised, but very pleasantly surprised that we were, you know, voted unanimously at town meeting in favor of it, and the highest percentage. I actually had looked at that afterwards, and so I think that's excellent. In terms of the timing, what would be, just to put it in perspective, like what grade students would be the first ones that would be in the new school if things go as scheduled?
So two and a half years is what we're looking at, so current freshmen may still be in the building. But, you know, yeah, the current 6th and 7th graders have an opportunity to be part of something great. So our, a good problem and a bad problem is our applications are through the roof right now. We're inching to 1,000 applications now, so we're about 250 over what we were three or four years ago. So we already have a challenge, and our goal is to meet the needs of all of the communities. So in addition to the new school project, we're looking at a lot of initiatives to begin sooner for students who don't get accepted. So we're working with some of the cities and towns, and we're working on some programs that I'll talk about next year, most likely, which is an after-doc type of program, which allows students to stay at their regular comprehensive high school during the first part of the day, and then elect, if they want, to come over to Northeast in the afternoon and go through some programs. But that's at our early stages, but it's something that I think a town like North Reading, with such great academics and such a great staff here, might wanna look into, because listening to your student rep, I can understand why we don't always get as many applicants from our North Reading students as some of other towns, but we hope to balance it out a little bit more in the future.
And it's worth noting that, even though there are a lot of applications and there's a long waitlist, each sending community does get a certain number of slots.
Yes.
And North Reading does have slots available, and so if there is anybody out there that just worries that they're gonna be buried on the waitlist, North Reading has a certain number of slots every year, and we honestly don't use all of them.
Correct.
And so if you do have students that are looking at, you know, a future in the trades, it's a great opportunity for a lot of students, so.
Well, I do think the excitement is out there, you know, the diagrams and all the publicity for the new school, and the new school is beautiful, and I think that that has a lot to do with the number of applicants. It makes us sad when that's announced every meeting, how many kids, it's going up and up and up in the waiting list, and even though, you know, our goal with building the new school was to try to eliminate a lot of that, but it's just gonna continue to be like that, we're afraid, and it's a great opportunity for kids, and I hope more North Reading kids take advantage of it.
And we need the employees in the local community, too, so.
Yep.
I will say, the only negative of it, we were at finance planning the other day, and we're putting on the future projections for years to come and putting the cost in there, so it's sliding in, but it's, you know, worthwhile expense, so.
For sure.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming, and thanks for updating. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. For the high school, I think we have, is Mrs. Kane here for the Notorious? Are we online, or?
Sure. Is anyone here to speak to Notorious?
Anybody here for Notorious?
I said I would speak.
You wanna speak on it quickly?
I think there's a Massacre thing going on when I walk by there.
Yeah, they're doing a, they're having a Theater Guild production, so I just, I can present.
Do you wanna do the high school first, and then go back to them?
I just thought maybe, just to give their support, it's pretty, it's pretty quick. I think it's probably good to do that here. So, as I think everyone is aware, our Notorious group has, going back two performances ago, they set the record for the highest and most points ever scored in a regional presentation. So in our quarterfinals, they scored the most points ever. It's the world record, I believe, for that. They then went on to Worcester, performed in Mechanics Hall, and they won in that competition as well. They're now in the top 10. They're gonna go to New York, they're gonna perform off-Broadway at a theater, and this is the request for to approve the overnight travels. They'd be leaving, as you can see in your materials, they'd be leaving on Thursday and staying overnight, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and they'd be returning home on Sunday. And I did send out a message to the community today, just with some updates and information. There's also some opportunities to support some fundraising efforts. They're having, there's a snap raise that's running, that's run by Notorious Parent Group. There are some T-shirts that are for sale, and then they're also holding a benefit concert on April 14th that is being run by Ms. Kane and the group, and so those were shared, those opportunities were shared out. So really, what we need from you tonight is just any thoughts or words for the group, and then also approval of their overnight trip.
Okay. First, any comments, questions?
Just proud of them, it's amazing. They're really, really talented.
Very proud of them, very proud of all the arts organizations, and it's a great month or couple of months for the arts organizations in North Reading, between Mascar's and Notorious and the art show next month. It's a very exciting time, but they have really accomplished a great deal, and there's, you know, they have no ceiling, so hopefully they can really, I think they'll really do well.
Yeah, it's incredible. It just seems like each year, there's some new bar that gets lifted up, you know, again and again and again, and it's really an astounding run of success that they're on. I'm thrilled that these kids have this opportunity to kind of show off the talent that they all have, so it's wonderful.
I mean, I think they're okay.
They're great, it's wonderful to have them. My only question is on the fundraising, does that fundraising get, is it for this trip in particular, and is it divided evenly amongst all the students? Or do you know how the fundraising is being divided up? Or is it like scholarships for certain students? Because I know, I was just curious about the fundraising, because there are lots of fundraisers that happen, and sometimes it's for future events. I just wanna see, is this one specifically for this, and is it just evenly being divided to lower the fees?
Covering the whole cost?
My understanding is the intent of the fundraising is for this particular trip and event, and it's to reduce the cost for all the students.
Across the board, okay. Yes.
I might have some more information if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
So, just because I am treasurer of the Music Booster, so we're trying to work with them, the cost of this trip is gonna be substantial, and they only have a couple of weeks to do it. So we're working with them a little bit as well, but it is, they are raising specifically for this trip.
Okay.
So, because it wasn't something that was originally budgeted for.
I mean, I also know, I saw one student trying to raise individually, which, again, every student can raise amongst their family and friends themselves, I just wasn't sure how it was all working, so.
This is the 10,000 for 14 students and two chaperones to go on the trip. There may be some other individual pieces to try to get friends and family and those kind of things.
Yeah.
This is geared towards the participants and the chaperones.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think they're making it so each kid has to raise a certain, like, sort of a situation if that's what you're asking.
No, no, I was just wondering if there was like, if there was like, you raise money, and then there's a scholarship that some students can apply to if they need, or if it was just lowering the overall cost, and then the cost will be divided, so.
This would be all, no student is contributing for that.
Yep, perfect.
Yeah, I don't think there's any funds, like, to be scholarship-wise, it's just working in.
So, any specific questions on the schedule? So it seems like they're performing twice, is that a set number, no matter what happens? There's, or that if they do well, the first performance, they do the second performance? Do you know?
I am not exactly sure of that detail.
Okay.
Sorry, yeah, so I don't actually know, oh, sorry.
It looks like there's two different organizations, right? We say ICHSA and then ICCA.
Ah, true. Okay.
And I think they do that when they know if there's, you know, one competition in town, then we'll, maybe, yeah, let's have a second.
Okay.
They try to coordinate those if they can. That's my impression.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if this is like, you know, you go to the final four and you pack for the whole weekend, hoping that you get to stay versus going home early, so, okay.
I think you're getting an opportunity to see, like, older a cappella groups as well.
Yeah.
So I don't know how much of them will be competing both days, and how much of it is there, like, participating in this larger a cappella.
Right, they may be viewing one, too. I'm not 100% sure of the details.
I think that the.
Going to a couple of shows, I mean, it's a nice trip to New York, if anybody wants to schedule, it's a good.
Good trip for, to New York, so.
Yep.
Any other questions on the actual trip? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the Notorious trip to New York.
I move that we approve the Notorious trip to New York.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, 5-0. Thank you, and good luck to Notorious. Nice. Okay, North Reading High School, Mr. Lopret and Company.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here tonight and to, you know, take an opportunity. We've got a number of students and some student groups, and I think as much as Sophia, you know, speaks in her report about how much is happening in the high school, we know that this, not just the high school, right? There's something going on outside the walls of the high school, and I think that's our focus this evening with our kind of career, community, and citizenship theme. I have Mr. Rocco and students from the internship program. With us this evening, I have Ms. Pierce as the advisor to the DECA Club, and then our third presenter will be Mr. Campabasso, who is the coordinator of our civic action project, that component of the social studies curriculum. So we're gonna lead it off with Mr. Rocco and his student group.
All right. Hello, I'm Josh Rocco, I'm one of the digital learning and entrepreneurship teachers here at the high school, and I also supervise the senior internship program. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the program and how it works, and then we have three of our senior interns that are gonna talk about their experience so far this year. So just a little bit about the program, who is eligible, as you might be able to guess, any North Reading High School senior who is in good academic standing, all right? So if I do have a student who comes up to me junior year who's interested in the program, the first thing I have them do is reach out to their guidance counselor, just to make sure they are eligible. Okay? And how it works, it's pretty straightforward. The internship takes place of the student's last block class each day. So every day, the student will leave after their third period class, they'll sign off from school to attend their internship. And outside of their regular duties and responsibilities at the internship, they also have a couple of things they're responsible for with me at school. They have a monthly journal entry that they're responsible for. Essentially, it's just a reflection on the month's work that they had at the internship, highlighting some of the ups and downs, some things that went really well, some things they wanna improve on moving forward, and even setting up goals for the next month ahead. And then what is the benefit? The biggest thing I always say is just the experience itself. A lot of the high school students that I talk to in my business classes talk about how they have no idea what they really wanna do when they do graduate, which is completely normal. I remember being there, too. So one thing I always encourage them to do is just start working as early as possible and as soon as possible. If anything, you're just gonna get that experience, you're gonna learn what you like about working, what you don't like about working, maybe what some of your strengths and some of your weaknesses are in the workplace as well. But ultimately, you're gonna just have some valuable skills that be able to take with you as you move on from high school. Time management skills, professional conduct, communication skills, they're learning all these things as they are currently involved in the program. All right, program requirements. Every student is responsible for finding their own internship, so as a supervisor, I can start helping some of the students as juniors to potentially, I guess, stay involved in the application process. We have a list of businesses that have worked with us in the past, local businesses that they can take a look at and see if they're interested in, but we do encourage students to look outside of that list, too, to see if there's any opportunities that really pique their interest or might be a better fit for what they wanna do career-wise. But requirements for the program, they do have to fill out an application form in which they talk about why they're interested in being a part of the program, and why they chose that business specifically to work for, for the internship. And then they need to submit a letter of approval from both their workplace supervisor, as well as a parent or guardian. Essentially, the parent or guardian just acknowledging that their student's leaving school every day to attend the internship. And then the last thing, oh, wait, oh, yeah, sorry, the last thing I wanted to talk about here before I turn it over to the students, I talked briefly about the journal entries, and then there was a portfolio. I talked briefly about the journal entries, and then there was a portfolio project that they're responsible for kind of chipping away at through the course of the year. So these, on the next two slides, are the nine essential competencies that are outlined in our course program syllabus. So essentially, what the portfolio project is, is the students throughout the course of the year are supposed to gather evidence that shows progress towards each one of these essential competencies. So by the end of the year, they have a portfolio to submit that talks to how they reached or how they worked towards some of these competencies here. So like I said, for the sake of time, I won't talk about each one in depth, but as you can see, they're kind of just broad, general targets or ideas for the students to think about while they're at the workplace. So we have communication and literacy, organizing and analyzing information, problem solving, using technology, completing entire activities, professional conduct, interacting with others, understanding all aspects of industry, and taking responsibility for career and life choices. Again, just things for these students to think about when they're completing their monthly journal entries while they're at the workplace, so they're not just kind of mindlessly going through their roles and responsibilities, their duties at work, but they're thinking about these things that they can carry with them as they move on to work down the road in their careers, all right? So with that being said, we do have three of our senior interns. I'm sure they were pumped that I put their pictures up here. But Gina Campagna, Alex Carpenter, and Sadna Gopinath. Gina works for the Dolman Company, which is a property management group out of Woburn. Alex is interning with Fairly Realty here in North Reading, and Sadna with De Blasie Law, who's also here in North Reading. So Gina's going to start us off here, just talking about kind of the place where she works, some of her major roles and responsibilities, and how she's been benefiting from the internship program.
Hi, my name's Gina Campagna, and I work at the Dolman Company, which basically we manage properties from all the way from Massachusetts to Florida. As an accounting intern, I work specifically with the accounts payable team. And I review and approve invoices, I pack boxes, I file, everything that helps them move along. I think before this internship, I had no clue what career path I wanted to choose. But having this hands-on work experience with accounting, I have now chose accounting as my major in college, so like, I know a lot more about what it would be like if I was an actual accountant. So I think it was just very beneficial to figure out my future.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alex Carpenter, and I'm interning at Fairly Realty Group, which is a local realty group right here in North Reading. And my main duties are, well, I help around the office with like administrative tasks, but my main duty is mainly to promote the company through social media. I film videos once a week, and I edit them and post them. And they're mainly about, I started out the year making videos about just like community events and stuff like that. But now I'm working on a series called like Guess That Town, where I make videos each week from a different town north of Boston, where we sell most of our properties. And we get like interactions with people commenting to try to guess the town. And winners from each week will get like a little gift card. And we've actually had people who have interacted with our videos come and say like they want to sell their house with us. So I think it's been really beneficial for the company. And I've had some great experiences working here, not only with learning about how businesses work, but also in the realty world, because I probably want to major in college in real estate. So I think it's been very beneficial to me to get my internship here, because it's really helped me, it's really helped me pick like, and understand realty, and made me want to major in it in college.
Hi, I'm Sadna Gopinath. So I'm an intern at De Blasie Law. It's just a small, local law firm that specializes in different areas of law, such as personal injury, real estate, estate planning, and business litigation. So some of my responsibilities are just helping the office run smoothly, just through tasks such as calling customer service, negotiating the prices of the services that the office uses, and making electronic and hard copy files for our clients in case matters. I also make case summaries, chronologies, and fee agreements. Some of the benefits of working here for me was that I got insight on how a typical office works on a day-to-day basis. It also set a realistic expectation for me on pursuing law as a career. And also, I have to work on a lot of group projects, which help me work in a group setting and boost my collaboration skills.
Did working in a law office make you more or less likely to want to be a lawyer?
I definitely enjoyed my time here. Liked working as an intern, but after seeing all the hard work that Attorney De Blasie does, I don't know if it's the right path for me. But I did enjoy my time here.
Couple of questions, quick, if I may?
Questions?
Yeah, so can you be paid for internships? Does it matter, are they just volunteer, or can they be paid as well?
So there is a co-op option as well. So students, we do have some students who are currently in a co-op program as well. I just could find a date to come tonight.
Okay.
Last year, we had somebody who was doing electrical work and stuff like that, so there are those opportunities as well.
Okay, and this might be a question I don't know if you can answer or not, but just, we see a lot of students come and do all sorts of activities for, you know, college applications. Is internship something that a lot of colleges are looking at as well? Is that something that you can really use towards, you know, your college application as well, the same as, you know, a club or an activity?
I'm not sure if I could totally speak to it, and I don't see how it hurts.
Yeah.
Just showing that you're taking some initiative to get some actually, some work-life experience.
And then obviously shows that you're being responsible, and you're taking on some more responsibilities outside of just your regular workload, or sports, or whatever it might be. Kind of shows that you're taking some initiative there as well. So this is my second year supervising the program. I think maybe like the guidance counselors might have a better idea as to how that looks on the actual application process, but I don't see how it hurts.
I think it would be great for somebody, you know, to get real-life experience, but I'm just hoping that colleges see that as well.
Yeah, I would hope so, too.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
What kind of, I apologize if you said this at the beginning, but what kind of numbers are in the program now, and how has it changed over the last couple, well, you've been there a couple of years?
Yeah, so last year, I think we had closer to 20, and then this year, I think we're like somewhere around 15. And I think the numbers have been lowered due to like COVID, and a lot of businesses that have worked with us in the past, kind of were a little bit uneasy about taking students in from schools. Definitely last year, and it definitely carried into this year as well. But I see the numbers going up, because I think students are even starting to become more aware of the program. I have, I've had probably more juniors come up to me so far this winter and spring than I had last year, for sure. So I think ballpark 20, and potentially growing for next year.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we're going to invite Ms. Pierce up and the students that are in
Good evening, thanks for having us. Nicole Pierce, I am one of the teachers in the digital learning and entrepreneurship department, and I'm also the faculty advisor for DECA. So I have our president, Aiden Nardo, and our vice president, Kieran Schultz, with us. I'm just going to run through what is DECA, how did it come about, and then I'll let the boys talk about their experience. So every year, I get, what does DECA stand for? And I actually had to reach out to our state, our state advisor. And it was originally called the Distributive Education Clubs of America, but then later, it was just renamed to the acronym DECA, much like AT&amp;T is AT&amp;T. It doesn't stand for what it used to. So the official definition is, the goal is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs. And they kind of lump the careers, although there's much more under the umbrellas, of marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And there are DECA chapters at the high school level, as well as the college level. So the students are able to develop and showcase their skills. They participate in competitive events, there are workshops, leadership programs. And we've been trying to do some fundraising with the whole business model behind it here at the school and in the town. Okay, so through, I used to run FBLA, which is the Future Business Leaders of America. And about three years ago, I had some students come to me and say, we'd really like to start DECA. We have friends in other towns who are in DECA, and they love it, can we try it? So the 2019, 2020 school year, I decided to run DECA at the same time as FBLA. Later, FBLA, the same kids who did FBLA wanted to do DECA, so then FBLA kind of fizzled out. So that first year, we had 12 members. The following year, we had 25 members. And unfortunately, a lot of the competitions, everything was virtual, but we had kids still compete and actually keep moving on to the next level. And then this year, thank you to the, our representatives who did a lot of our recruiting, we jumped up to 85 members. Yeah, so kudos to them, because they did all that work. Yeah, so hopefully, as word gets out, and the kids are talking to their peers, that we'll start, see an increase. All right, so I will turn it over to Aiden or Kieran, I'm not sure how they split up.
So, the career clusters and events. So we will join a competition, that's the whole point of this. And so members will compete within a particular career cluster and focus area. So there's four career clusters, numerous events within each cluster. So there's marketing with marketing communications and sports entertainment marketing. And there's business management and administration with business law and ethics and human resource management. Finance with accounting and applications, business finance and financial consulting. And finally, hospitality and tourism with hotel and lodging management, restaurant and food management, and travel and tourism.
So we had our competition on December 9th, and we had 85 members actually go. This is like our big event for the year, and we go to a nice hotel, and there's all the other towns with a similar size in our district there. And we had eight people actually move on to the state conference later on. And at this conference, you basically kind of execute a business meeting with someone where you present an idea when you're faced with a problem. So you might get a question about how will you manage this finance if you're faced with this challenge in the company? And then you present it wearing proper business apparel and using proper business etiquette to kind of get used to how business decisions work and how you have to act in the workplace. And our state conference, it was held at the Boston Copley Marriott, actually pretty recently, and eight members qualified to compete here. And the International Career Development Conference will be held in Atlanta, Georgia next month.
So why DECA? We always tell our members to join, because it provides a sense of community. It helps with networking and the leadership opportunities. And it's a platform to showcase and develop business knowledge and entrepreneurial skills for students who are interested in going to that in their future.
Yeah, so these are just a couple of pictures of all of us at the state, at the state conference, as well as the district conference, just having a really fun time. There was tons of towns there. And I know for a lot of us, it was a really meaningful experience, kind of deciding what we want to do in our futures. I know for me, I ended up deciding I wanted to do finance in college, which is my major after I actually did, I did the finance concentration at the DECA competition. And I kind of figured out that's what I wanted to do, that's what I wanted to deal with. So it was a pretty good experience for me.
It was the same for me. I didn't do the finance cluster, but I did decide to go into finance, just from hearing other people who did the finance cluster in DECA. And through that, it helped me decide to major in finance, so.
Any questions? Is that, what grades is this for? Is it nine through 12, or?
Yeah, we, most of our officers this year are seniors, but we have a lot of people looking to move into officer roles, because the past two years, our kind of friend group kind of took over the officer role, and we really expanded the club. But now we have a lot of new freshmen and sophomores in, which is where a lot of the 85 members actually came from. So it's a really young group right now, which is good.
Yeah. Two fellows might, so I was a judge at the December 9th event, which was the first time I had, I had been in that role. And you were both there on that day. So what happens is, you know, as a judge, you get a little kind of role-play scenario. The students also have the scenario, and then you're kind of given this problem, and you have some time to do some research and figure it out, and come in with a strategy. But then, when you have this meeting, somebody's on the other side, and you've got to kind of figure it out, you've got to be prepared to ask questions, you're going to have, you know, what research did you do at the time? Where can you go? What other knowledge do you have that kind of helped facilitate this discussion? I was a, I was a possible victim of insurance fraud. And so that was a really interesting thing to kind of go through and have, you know, this rep on the other side of the table kind of helped me through, you know, what I was afraid of, what I thought, you know, might happen, or what are the fears, and, you know, what do I need to know? And I know that there were some other, kind of, you're a hotel manager, you've got a very upset client who's, you know, furious about this, I didn't navigate that, that whole situation. And there's a scoring rubric and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, it was, it was a great experience for me. I hadn't done that before, but I could, the value of it is tremendous. So I just wanted to share that.
Questions? Okay, thank you, guys, nice job.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Mr. Campabasso and the Civic Action Project. So I'm just going to get out of the way. Excuse me.
Absolutely.
Good evening, thank you for having us. My name is Chuck Campabasso, social studies teacher here at North Reading High School. I am the Civic Action Project Coordinator for the high school. There's a split there, the eighth grade has a Ms. Jones, I believe. I am fortunate enough to have some students with me to talk about their projects, but first, we'll talk a little bit about what the Civic Action Project is. Back in 2018, don't do that, Governor Baker signed a law into action where the goal is to enhance the civic engagement of high school students. And so through that, we have a handbook that was created by the state through DESI, that we try to create civic projects where these folks go through a process to identify problems within our communities and ways that we can solve those problems. So through that, again, these are all student-led projects where they identify problems that they see needing solutions, and again, they do the research on that and so forth. So the process as set up is where they examine themselves within the community, what role they play, and how they are affected by different, again, you know, problems that they see. From there, they identify one that means something to them. So how we do that, their junior year, we spend some time with community service, trying to attempt to identify some of those problems. And then senior year, a little bit more of that, but then also reaching out to community members, you know, people that we call assets, you know, who are community leaders, whether it be folks like yourselves, or members of different, other different government organizations. And through those conversations, and even their own family members, parents, teachers, so forth, they're able to identify what do other people see as problems. And through that whole process, they start to narrow down what it is that they want to begin working on. From there, they start the research process. Why is this a problem? Why is it happening? And when they get to what we call the root cause of that problem, that's when they start to look at, how do we solve that problem? After that, they begin the action plan process. And I should say that this, right now, currently as formulated, is a pretty much full-year process. We are actually finishing up the last stage of it, their final product to do on Friday. I'm expecting wonderful things. But it is a full-year process. We begin in the fall, finish up here in the spring. They formulate the plan, we work together about how that's going to look, what that final product will look like when they're going through it. And then they take that action, institute the plan. And then from there, we start reflecting and showcasing. Not all plans are successful. They may come in and say, okay, I want to do X, Y, and Z. And the reality is, they don't get approval from somebody in town government, they don't get approval from here in the building. That is not necessarily a failure. What we see as success is that they go through this process, they realize all the elements of, you know, making change and trying to fight for change, so to speak, depending on whatever problem it may be. And then they learn from that. And if they are successful, which we'll look at some successful projects in a moment, all the better. But I think that the experience is really what's most important. So tonight, we have for you three groups, I should say, two of them are here, although there are three young ladies there, but one was unable to come. They had a project where they identified needs of homeless folks, and how do I, how best to help them. They began to work with a group within the building, our Interact Club, where they kind of worked with them to set up a program where they would collect clothing from community members, and then that clothing, those goods would be then transferred to an organization who could make sure folks in need would be able to get it. The hope in working with the Interact Club is that this would be something that would be continuous. It's not a one-shot deal, that would not solve the problem. But if it was something that would happen every year, then maybe we can work towards that change. So they were able to work with an organization outside the building, an organization within inside the building, and through all of that, be able to create this program that, again, hopefully we'll see, you know, dividends. I'm going to turn it over to our other students who are here. Thank you all for being here. First up, we have Gina Mulick and Ava Akari, the third member's not here, but I'll turn it over to you folks.
So our problem is food insecurity and it's a problem that many people included, including those in North Reading, don't have access to food. Although it's almost impossible to solve this issue, there are many ways to help.
So we wanted to help bring awareness to food insecurity and what it's all about. So we went through many different ideas of how to do this. And our first idea was to put like boxes where people can drop off canned food at Stop &amp; Shop. But we did more research into that and they already have one. So we decided to come up with the idea of reaching out to the North Reading Food Pantry and working with them. And we found out like different numbers and like ways to bring awareness to our, um, projects. And we made flyers where people can scan the QR code for Venmo and they could Venmo us money to bring into the food pantry and donate it later. So first we started off with a goal of one hundred dollars and we sent that out to friends and family, like the flyer. And we ended up raising well over a hundred dollars. So we then, um, sent it into the North Reading and Reading Facebook community page to bring more awareness to it and show people like what we're doing and how we're trying to help. And we got a lot more donations. So we raised our goal to eight hundred dollars. And within a few weeks of having the flyers out, um, we raised over eight hundred dollars. So we set our goal for a thousand dollars and we, um, reached out to Stop &amp; Shop and Market Basket, got approval to hang the flyers up. And we hung them up in those places and we ended up raising nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars that we will be donating to the North Reading Food Pantry.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jackie Magna and for my civic action project, the issue I looked at revolved around the lack of interest in STEM fields in many students. Um, in my research, I found most interests are at the elementary school level and my program specifically targeted interest of STEM at that grade level. So for my program, me and a group of high school volunteers planned to go to the elementary schools around North Reading and teach them a bit more about the STEM fields and ultimately to ignite their interest in like science. Um, so we so far have run two successful events at the North Reading Little School. Um, like I said, they were very successful. The students were very engaged the entire time and the feedback was incredibly positive. Um, I actually heard from a teacher that we worked with at the little school that some parents talked to her about how our, like, program helped their students, um, get their interest in science, which was really cool. Um, so we are now in the process of talking to the other, other elementary schools, um, as well as the middle school to hopefully continue the success of this program. Um, I'm so glad to have had this opportunity and I can't wait to see where this program goes from here. Thank you.
Nice job. I will, I will just point out for people coming to the school committee, I think that's my son on the photo. That's a very good thing when you come to the school committee. Thank you very much. Great job.
It's always about scottism. Or a son.
That's what I'm saying. Speak to the audience.
Any, uh, any questions?
Any questions? I mean, I think, I think, oh, Ginny, go ahead.
Um, to the STEM part, um, did you utilize any of the maker, um, material, thank you, and space at the, at the little school? Or did you bring your own kind of?
Yeah, so we bought all the materials beforehand. So I know one of the experiments we did was like the planetary modeling. So we just used Play-Doh, Play-Doh to like model the solar system and then we had to basically match up which, which planet they thought was which one. So that was one of the experiments. But we brought all the materials in beforehand.
Um, and if you don't mind, one more.
Go ahead.
Um, for the awareness of the, um, uh, the food, sorry, I'm trying to remember the words that you used.
Food insecurity.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah. Um, I used to work at a, um, well, I used to work at Target and they donate food to local, um, food pantries as well. And you might want to reach out to like local, you know, there's one in Lubin, one in Wilmington, you know. Um, and they could probably set aside specific things if you wanted to because, you know, they, they're looking to donate to, um, communities. So I don't, that might be another thing that you guys can reach out and, and not just Target. I'm sure there's, you know, Walmarts and all of the other things that have, um, food that, you know, they're looking to donate. So it was just a, something I want to let you.
And my, my only comment would be, I think, when you said, you know, the idea of this project is to learn to fight to ch- fight for changes. And I think that's just an important message overall. I mean, if you see something that you don't think, you know, is right, or you feel, feel that there's something that needs to change, finding ways to try to do that, rather than just saying, it's always been that way, it's always going to be that way. You know, you have to somehow step up and say, I'm going to try to make change. And so I think it's great to be, you know, teaching that to students. I think it's great to teach that to adults as well. And, you know, and I think overall broader on the whole discussion tonight, even I think, I've been very happy with the presentation for the high school overall. And I think it's been probably the best one that I've seen since I've been here. And I think overall, a lot of it is looking forward. I mean, it's looking forward to life beyond school, it's looking outside of the school, you know, uh, school day, school boundaries and, you know, trying to change, you know, develop the way to think, you know, to challenge yourself. And so I, I think it's a great message, so I appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I want to say thank you again. I, it was, um, that's certainly the message, that so much is happening inside. But we, we want to be able to say, hey, get outside the walls of the school and, and start to explore.
Yep. Thank you.
Be involved. So thank you.
Yeah, everyone was so, such good speakers tonight, so.
Yep.
Okay, give them a moment to leave, though.
Which one do you think is your son?
I think the blue. Can't really tell on the left hand side.
Is it bad that I can't tell if it's my son or not? It's probably not a good thing from a parent, but I will say I can only see it with one eye really well still, so. Okay. Okay, we have a research project. By process of elimination, I'm going to guess I know who it is, but, um.
Michelle, I can introduce.
No, Caulfield, yes, would you like to introduce?
You know, in the past when we've had surveys that are done, um, that involve students, we usually bring them before the school committee. I believe the superintendent usually approves it, but I, you know, this is the first time this has come under, uh, my watch. I know that we've had a lot of questions from parents about, um, their ability to opt out of surveys. And so, you know, I reviewed the materials. Um, Michelle had worked with Mr. LaPratt to get approval at the school level. Um, we also shared with, uh, Ms. Conant, because this involves special education. We want to make sure that the, the questions were in line with, with the programs and the questions that we have here. But this is a research project through, um, her, her program of studies, which you, she, she shared all of those materials with you. But, um, Michelle was just going to present a brief overview of what she's doing and then just if you had any questions. And then at the end, it's really just, you know, it's not really an approval, but it's more of a, you know, I just want to make sure that I'm in the right place to recommend this for the future, so. Michelle, okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, the program I am at is at Greenville University out of Illinois, um, in Greenville, Illinois. And it's a small Catholic college, um, about the size of Salem State. I have decided to get another master's in special education and that's where this is coming from. I teach math right now. Um, the purpose of this program was to really find out from the people involved in inclusion math classrooms what inclusion means to them. So I, I wanted to know from the math teachers, the general ed math teachers, the special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, um, and again, the parents and the students. Um, I did meet with Cynthia. We came up with a clear, um, I think it's number six on the recruitment statement that she had me include that this study will be presented to the school district and the education department at Greenville solely for the purpose of fulfilling requirements of my degree. No other dissemination of results will occur and no personally identifiable information will be contained in any document at any time. So, um, the, all the surveys are going to be done through Google, uh, through Google forums. There's no emails being collected. There are no names, any identifiers on there. Um, I did, uh, give you copies of the survey, so you can see they're very, very general. It's their perceptions only, um, that I'm looking for. And hopefully as, as our classrooms grow and change and evolve, we can incorporate these different essential components um, as seen by the stakeholders, um, of our community, of our school.
Okay. Any questions on the project, the questions? My only, my only question was, in terms of the responses, they're all open form questions. And I feel like you're going to get a lot of very different answers. And so, I, I guess as a researcher, to try to come to any conclusions from that. I mean, how exactly do you do it when you get open responses? And are you, are you just, are you going to try to sort of summarize what each one's saying versus giving, giving some general thoughts for them to pick between?
Exactly. I'm going to code it so that I can see if there's keywords that are repeated through all the different stakeholders from, from students, parents. I'm not a hundred percent sure about the feedback I'll get from students, um, uh, but both the specialized teachers and the math teachers. And see if there's some commonalities in all of the different surveys that, that they would like to open up more for discussion and maybe get us all on the same page about what that is. And, and I'll go through those. It, it's not going to be too many because it's more of a case study rather than a, a full-blown research. So it will be manageable, um, for me, given, given our population. But, um, in terms of the data, since it's truly qualitative in nature, I will include a section in my analysis of key excerpts from different participants that sort of summarize where their thoughts are coming from.
And, and, and the end goal of this is a paper that you'll be presenting for the masters?
Thesis, yes.
Yes, okay. Questions? Concerns? Okay, and so you, we don't want an official vote on this? I mean, any, any, raise any concerns if anybody has?
Yeah, discussion, I believe it's, um, by approval.
Yeah. And again, I think, I think if you're opting, if you're asking somebody if they want to participate and they choose to participate, I don't see an issue with that. I don't know.
Yeah, if you want it, if you want, uh, explicit comments, then I would, I would say this seems reasonable and I don't have any issues.
Chris, any concerns?
No, I mean, I like the way you phrase it, the, um, that you're, you're looking from, for parents to give their consent for you to invite kids to participate. I think that's just the right mindset.
For what it's worth, it's a meaningful topic.
Thank you.
It really is. So it's, it would be, you know, just hearing it, be interested to see what you come up with.
Absolutely. I'll share it with you.
Okay. Got enough comment for you, Dr. Daly?
That's perfect. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We're going back to our COVID-nineteen update, which, again, I don't know if we should keep this on here particularly going forward or just superintendent's update at some point in time, but.
You can change that. It's just a, you know, it's a matter of, um, I don't want to jinx it either by taking it off.
Exactly.
Um, we had, you know, a local school district not too far from here that had, um, an uptick and they had to go back, um, to closing classrooms and that like, so, you know, we have not seen that. Our numbers have looked good. Just to recap from January, we had four hundred fifty-seven student positive cases, eighty-three staff. February was down to one and four. And in March, um, not quite updated through today, but we're, we're just under forty, thirty-six, and eight. So there's a few, there's a few more, um, that I need to report. But, um, much better numbers, the town numbers are looking good. We are keeping our eye on, on variants. I, the one thing I wanted to discuss under here, um, tonight though, is just the process for if we were to have, um, any kind of a change. My thought would be that we would, um, I would just recommend, if we had a huge uptick in numbers, my thought would be that I would communicate that out. I think masking is optional and it's a choice for people, but I think with the right information, more people may choose to mask. We may even go as far as saying, you know, we would strongly recommend that if that's what we felt was recommended by the Board of Health. But it wouldn't be a, uh, we would not need to entertain any kind of conversation around mandates or requirements at the local level similar to what we've done all along. So the, the idea would just be, if we saw a large spike, let's say forty, fifty, or, or at a school or in a grade level, we'd want to let people know that so they could make the most informed choice. So that would be the, uh, the recommendation that I would have. And I just wanted to share that and just see what people thought about that idea.
Uh, just the way you phrased that, I think you said if that's what the Board of Health recommended, is the idea that you just link the messaging to match the Board of Health? Or are there certain, are you just kind of speculating?
Yeah, I'm ju- I'm thinking in terms of what, uh, might be, I would work with, you know, continue to work with DESI. This is what would happen in that case. You know, everyone's goal is to not close school, not close classes, not do anything different. And, um, you know, so I've had this discussion with, with other leaders and other superintendents. And I don't see that North Reading would need to do anything other than continue to make a re- a strong recommendation. You know, and just to say whether we, we believe this is, you know, the right information. There are people now that are, that are continuing to mask. Um, and I think with that, with just being aware of those additional numbers, they might want to focus. I, I may even focus it more at, you know, that individual school where something might be happening. Again, this is hi- hypothetical, but based on a case that happened in a local district not too far from here. That, that district took some different measures and I, I probably wouldn't necessarily do that. Like I said, I would, I would say more of a, um, you know, informational and let people make the informed choice.
Yeah, that would be my thought, just because I think some people are checking the dashboard more frequently in the past. And I'll be honest, I haven't checked the dashboard in a long time.
Sure.
And, you know, I just think that if a parent, i- i- if there was an outbreak in a class or in a school, I think some parents would appreciate knowing that there's an uptick. And then they can make the decision that's right for their family. And, you know, again, I, 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 I think that would be the one thing that like as a parent, like if I knew that a lot of teachers were out or a lot of, a lot of students were getting it at the little school, then I'd want to know that so that I could then decide if I wanted to do it, treat it differently. But that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I think that, um, you know, as, as has always been the case and as you've been very good at it, the clarity of the message is, is very important. Uh, but, yeah, the, the approach certainly seems, uh, seems, uh, appropriate.
Would you define what that threshold would be that would make you reach that certain point of going towards? Just because of the perception of going backwards, um, when you throw out the word strongly recommend, although I'm in favor of what you're saying, because choice at the end of the day is what's always been important. Um, but do you feel like there's a certain threshold where you would say, you know, where that, that piece of it, like we're strongly recommending versus like, hey, I'm informing you and it's, you know, you can do what you want to do, what's best for your family. But when do you get to that point where the school district comes out and says strongly recommends? Because that's when it, you know, for the entire community, you get that dagger like, oh, we're going backwards, right? Which you don't want to do, but what, what is that threshold? Have you thought about that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's at that point where certainly that stage before you need to close a classroom. Um, and so if you start seeing, um, clusters, five, six kids in a class of twenty, um, you know, again, I would check in with the Board of Health, the Department of Ed would be walking through this. If they believe that the masks would help, that would be the recommendation. But I agree, that's the whole point of not going backwards. And certainly what I'm getting at is not going back to any kind of mandate. We never had one here anyway, but other districts that had mandates talked about, do you need to go back to a mandate for a school, for a class? What I'm basically saying is, I don't think we would talk about requirements. Because we never had them to begin with. It would just be, what information do you need to recommend? So we'd just say, the first layer would certainly be, there is an uptick in the schools, um, as you, where you have a choice, you know. But at some point it might be, um, you know, strong recommendation. But I, I wouldn't make that decision in isolation. It would need to be significant numbers, not one or two, um, to start, right? So, um, but we, you know, as I, as I said before, it just, our local data, um, the masks weren't making a difference up until a certain point. We saw when kids were outside of school, um, without masks, there were, there were more numbers, there were numbers in school. I think in January is kind of out the window, we were all, were masked, we saw the numbers going up. So, um, if we did see where we felt that the mask would be helpful, that's when we would say that. I don't anticipate this happening. I, like I said, our numbers have looked very good. We're keeping a very close eye on other variants that are emerging. So I, I love the recommendation of taking this off the agenda, um, and, and we can do that. And then hopefully that doesn't, uh, jinx us or anything moving forward. But, um, I just wanted, that was just one last point I wanted to clarify if that were to come up. But our local numbers, um, have remained, um, reasonable.
Todd, can we take it off the agenda, please?
That's what I would like to do.
I, I cer- certainly, and if there ever is any information, it would be entirely appropriate to put it in the administrative report or something.
Sure.
And, and again, I mean, just to kind of reiterate, reiterate, to me, it's just getting the information out there about the numbers because if people aren't checking daily, I don't think everybody knows. And, you know, and it, it could be that maybe you know that the fourth grade has a few kids out, but you don't know that, you know, that the third grader that's next door doesn't know that there's an outbreak in the fourth grade class. And so I, I just think getting information to parents that they can make decisions is important, so.
The other two pieces I'm going to talk about was testing. So we still, we're continuing with the at-home testing program, pool testing program. Um, we may get a, a word in the future of that, those programs. They were always said to continue at least through April, and so we're coming upon April. I haven't officially heard anything different, but, you know, I, I would not be surprised if we saw something, um, starting to change after April. So I think I will share that out, the information as soon as I have it. So I think I will share that out, the information, as soon as I have it. But that, that's something that's been in the back of my mind. We did have two different donations of at-home tests that were sort of for any use. It wasn't the, you know, the at-home program we're doing through the Department of Ed is really targeted for our program, Testing Weekly on Thursdays. These other cases were donated and we opened them up to everyone. So we did put that out. We've distributed about half of them to families that needed them, and we're going to put out another, another call for anyone else that wants that. I'll probably put that out tomorrow, and we'll distribute hopefully the rest of those. They have, they had an expiration written on them of April, but they were all officially extended until July. So I think we went from a place in January you couldn't get tests to now, you know, insurance companies are giving them, and our numbers are down, and so there's not as much of a demand, but we would like to get those into the hands of people, so I will be putting that out tomorrow as well. Anything that you wanted to add?
You know, operationally, I think we discussed busing at one point, and there was, there was an initiative that we were trying, going to try to improve the communication, and just want to take the opportunity that we were working hard at rolling out that parent communication bus app, and it's now rolled out at all three elementary schools. So I've been checking in with the company that we're working with, and my understanding is the participation in that, who are parents that are taking advantage and downloading an account and using it is going up, so we hope that continues. And we are getting ready to roll it out at the middle school and the high school. So it was recommended we do this in phases, so we started back in February, and I think next Monday we'll, we're planning on launching the middle school and the high school. So hopefully parents are using it, and we, we hope it's another tool of communication that's helpful to, to families and parents with students that ride the bus, and just another initiative that, believe it or not, we, we started back at the beginning of the pandemic. The pandemic kind of slowed it, we kind of had to shift our, our focus, but I'm glad we kind of stuck with it, and I was, I'm just pleased to see that that's, that's out there and available, so.
This might be off-topic, but it, you brought up buses, so just, when we're doing the budget now, do we think we have the right number of buses for next year? I mean, do we think, do we have, do we have an idea if, like, this is kind of a demand or if there might be, is there any speculation on there being different demand next year?
I think, I think the twelve buses is pretty, the budget for next year obviously plans kind of status quo, and we'll continue with the, the same user fee and the same busing. We're actually getting ready to, believe it or not, to, to full health registration. It's probably going to happen, it almost happened today, it'll probably happen either tomorrow, Wednesday, so parents will get that email.
We'll have an idea of when we're doing the budget.
So we'll have an idea, but I, I do believe that twelve right now is the right number. I, I don't, not seeing anything that's making me believe it's going to significantly go up or go down and, and we're going to have access space or, or, you know, I think, I think I've said, I think one more bus would sort of give us a little more flexibility to just be certain that there's not going to be a waiting list, but the waiting list this year was small, and I think we did accommodate all the families that really needed a bus, you know, those that had a little flexibility that was sort of, you know, the, the waiting list remained very small.
Well, and, and just to be clear, I mean, the waiting list, by the time that the applicant, when, when the date of, that you had to apply by.
Correct, everyone got.
Everybody was on there. It was just, it was. People that came in later that asked for it after the deadline.
Correct.
Ended up on a waitlist, so.
Correct.
And when we're planning a budget, we can't, we can't speculate that, oh, maybe a hundred people are going to apply after the deadline. That's why we ask at the certain time we do, in order to plan for it, so. Could we, because I remember last year when we were making these changes, we had to make changes to the budget at that time.
Correct.
To account for the extra buses, so.
So I think, yeah, I think it's, it's the right number and.
Okay. Oh, and my, my only other question sort of related to COVID is, you know, the project on food insecurity today. Is there any guidance from the state or federal government on when the free lunches are going to end?
So we have gotten an update on that. So it looks like right now, based on all the information that has been sent, that the, the USDA will no longer be offering the kind of universal free, free school meals for breakfast and lunch next school year. So it does look like we're returning back to the typical program where it's, you know, free reduced lunch, students would obviously be applying as they typically should be doing anyway, and they would receive the benefit, but, you know, the paid lunch program would be, would be returned. So that's what we're kind of gearing up towards. We've actually had meetings with the staff to kind of talk about that and prep for that. Some of the other flexibility, which I actually hope they might change, you know, some of the, they're right now planning on not allowing, in, in terms of, right now, they kind of offer some grab-and-go meals, and you can kind of have a grab-and-go cold meal option as the students are kind of leaving on certain days, and that is considered a reimbursable meal. And right now, they're, they're considering not allowing that, and it just goes back to how, to how it was previously, so. But I did think that was kind of a nice option that allowed some flexibility and for families that needed it on, on certain half-days, on certain days that may not have been a lunch offering, and it also allowed for some increased, increased, you know, revenue as well, so. We're hoping that changes, there's some discussion happening, and we'll just continue to monitor, to rate and see, see where we're at.
Chris, just on, on that note, Mr. Connolly, the, given that now it's been a couple of years since, I presume people have needed to sign up for, for your reduced lunch, if they need that, I'm just, I, I don't know how it's, if it's been accessible to everybody for a couple of years, I just wasn't sure if there's any need to have further outreach or just to make sure people that need that kind of support are extra aware that.
Yeah.
You know, they might be out of practice of.
Yeah, it's a good question. We've still been promoting families to, to still fill out the application and sign up and enroll, you know, throughout these two years, even though it didn't necessarily, you know, it was universally free, there was potentially some other benefits if you fill out the sharing form that goes along with being, you know, being on a, on the free reduced lunch program. So we, we've still been promoting it, we'll continue to do that, but I think you're right. I think outreach, as we get closer to next school year, and typically that application isn't even ready, unfortunately, until the end of June. I wish it was, was earlier, but we kind of have to wait until the, the USDA kind of publishes that application and new applications are required every year. But we'll continue to do that. We have also been going through our own kind of direct certification process through the state's virtual gateway program, which that's required to happen four times a year. We, we've been doing it every month. So we do that, you know, twelve times a year, and the requirement's quarterly, four times a year. And every time we do that, we do typically directly certify some students for that benefit as well, and so we'll, we'll continue to do that, and that's been happening over the past two years as well.
Thank you.
So that's in addition to getting the forms in. These are people that might qualify for other services through the state. They're now looking at it both ways. And in addition, through the pandemic, we had the P E B T program too, so we've been proactively emailing people that qualify from either service for the, basically the electronic benefits that they would get too. So I do agree that it's good to refresh, but I think we've also been in constant contact.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you. Okay, moving on, routine matters, minutes. We first have the executive session of March seventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session minutes of March seventh of twenty twenty-two as written.
Second?
Only discussion, I saw, when we were talking about the purpose of going into it, it's, it should be collective bargaining, not collecting bargain, bargaining? It's collective bargaining, but that was my only catch.
You don't think we should collect bargaining?
I think we should be collecting them, no. Okay, any other changes? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Well, it's written correctly on the open session.
It is.
So I will make a motion to accept the open session minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second?
Any discussion on there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session minutes of March eleventh, twenty twenty-two as written.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining because I was not there. I was under general anesthesia at the time, so. So it passes four to zero. Okay, budget update. Mr. Connolly, anything?
So there's nothing this evening, no formal update. I think we did one at the last March seventh meeting, so I think there'll be a more detailed one at the April eleventh meeting, but again, we're, again, obviously approaching the final quarter of the fiscal year, but I think we're, you know, the same trends I've been speaking with throughout the year are still at play. We just obviously are kind of shifting gears and getting into that process, where we'll try to prepare for a smooth closeout so that, believe it or not, we're, we're going to be in that final quarter very soon.
Goes quick. Okay, staffing, any update?
None at this time.
That was a much quicker, none at this time. It's in donations. Get on, Michael, I had it.
Looks like there's a couple. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of four thousand five hundred dollars from Tim Haynes, Assistant Treasurer of the North Reading Diamond Club. Those funds are intended for the painting and maintenance of the baseball grounds at the high school.
Second? Any discussion?
I assume that Tim Haynes is responsible for coordinating the donation that actually is from the Diamond Club, that the donation is.
He is, correct. This, this is, I know it says baseball grounds, the focus here is more on the dugouts.
Hmm, okay.
They did receive some quotes and they've, they're working with a, a painting company to get, to get this updates happening, which is great.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of COVID test kits, hand sanitizer and wipes valued at three thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents from Chris Mabbett at Veterans Business Supply to benefit the district.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I hope I said Mr. Mabbett's name correctly.
I never say anybody's.
I just want to add, he, Veterans Business Supply, Mr. Mabbett's actually a local North Reading resident, and he has children that attend the district, but they've been extremely helpful since the beginning of the pandemic, when a lot of these P P E supplies were very difficult to come by, they, they really came through for us kind of early on, and he's made several donations at this point, this being one of them, so it's just, we're really appreciative of that, that partnership that's developed.
Nice.
That's great.
Should we have him come in at some point to recognize him?
Yeah, I think, I can certainly reach out to him.
This was the second, yeah.
I mean, this is probably the third.
Just a, and just as, in, in partnership with you, just in terms of acquiring stuff through the normal processes, that's great, yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Subcommittee updates? Athletic Subcommittee?
We met. As I dig them, I know it's March, I believe I was at work. There was a gentleman that is interested, his name is Brian, but I didn't get his last name. He would like to try to get a ice hockey rink in North Reading. He has talked to some surrounding towns, I believe, that had it developed through private and business mixture instead of having it funded through town taxes and things of that nature. It was interesting proposal. Then we were.
Is there any location proposed for that or not? Does he have property or?
There's not.
No, no. I think he wanted something right off, like twenty-eight, I believe, is what he was looking for.
There were some ideas for, for ideas, and basically this was, the next step would be to, to see what a feasibility study would look like. I think we shared just some of the challenges to all that and the costs associated with a feasibility study, so.
And then Mr. Johnson talked a little bit about the winter season. He said the numbers of participants was down a little bit, but it looked like the spring attendance was jumping up and would probably be, I'm sorry, at full capacity at, at the events that, the sporting events, and there was no mask on, so that was a, a good thing, people appreciated that. And there was no eighth grade waivers needed so far, except for possibly the softball girl, the girl softball team. The lighting project was delayed a little bit, the final inspection needs to be done, the scoreboard. There's a, there was more talk about what actually should go on the scoreboard.
Yeah.
And, and a rough pricing.
Yeah, if I could add a little bit to the scoreboard project, so this is another item that, the scoreboard is at the turf field, stadium, football stadium field, is definitely approaching the end of its useful life. It's been there for a number of years, so it's definitely getting to the point where it does need to be replaced. So Mr. Johnson has worked with some, some vendors and gotten some proposals to replace the scoreboard. It's, it's certainly a sizable cost, definitely a little bit more expensive than the scoreboards that we've recently replaced at the softball and baseball field. The dimension's a little bit larger, there's a little bit obviously more, more to it in terms of the LED lighting that's involved. So one proposal, one idea that was discussed at the meeting to try to offset the cost, I think we're hopeful that there's some local kind of booster support groups, even youth organizations that could come in that all benefit from the scoreboard and, and donate some, some funding for that, but certainly not for the, the full, the full cost. So one idea that we talked about was to potentially do a, a bid through the chapter thirty, thirty B process that would solicit local businesses, companies in town that may be interested in sponsoring such a purchase, similarly to what we did with the sponsorship with the Wakefield Savings Bank, with the previous two scoreboards that were recently done, but this, the only difference is, is now we, we would be that kind of solicitor going out to bid, just to help defray the cost, and we could, chapter thirty B of the local procurement laws does allow us to do this, and it does allow us to kind of set some minimum thresholds and some, some term on that, on that bidding process. We think we could do it within the sponsorship policy with the school committee and provide some space on, on such a board for a fixed amount of period for a, for a kind of donation, which is kind of how it's done. And that might help get, get an acquisition cost lower to allow this to happen earlier.
Then I believe it would also help in future, like, say, like, bulbs need to be replaced or something, you know, so say five or ten years down the road, whichever the, the donation time period of.
Correct.
Such bid would be, that you could re-up or you could change if the business goes out and, you know, a new business.
Correct. You could set, this could be three years, and then we're going to kind of refresh for five years, and then you can kind of ask for some, some donations, so.
Which I thought was pretty smart.
Yeah, I know this was, kind of came up the last time, and, you know, so we wanted to kind of be upfront and discuss, and this is, this was, is one option that does exist for us when we make a purchase like a scoreboard.
What's the dollar amount we're looking at?
So the total, the total price of the, is about forty thousand dollars, so it's pretty sizable, and that's essentially using the existing structure, and we feel we might be able to, through donations, about ten thousand dollars could be available, so that the difference in cost is about thirty thousand, and then, you know, we don't know if going through this type of a bidding process, we haven't done it previously, you know, could yield another, you know, ten thousand dollars, which is similar range of what the, the previous sponsorship with the Wakefield Savings brought to the district, which could get that price down to something more reasonable, about twenty thousand dollars.
And I think that they talked about the spring sports, sign up was due today, is that right, or last Monday? One of them.
Sure. I think we, we've got, we've got sports underway, right?
Well, yeah, they're in the back. Yeah, this is, this is week, week two of spring sports, so.
So that was my notes that I got.
Excellent. I'll, I'll just add that we had the, we are adding a storage shed by the tennis courts. We discussed that a little bit. It's going to be multipurpose, going to be used for tennis, but also for the, the theater productions. They really don't have onsite storage up at this campus, and so that will be there. And we're going to work on that to dress it up and decorate it in a very appealing way, yeah.
Thank you for bringing that up. Have we reached out to the neighbors to alert them?
We, we are, we're going to notify the neighbors that, that this will be going in and what it's going to look like and for any questions that come forward, yeah, so. It's really going to be the neighbors that would be in sight on that, so.
Yep.
Fine, Art Subcommittee update?
You both pointed each other.
We were both, we were both on the phone to this one, so I don't think we have comprehensive notes either.
We don't, uh, but, um, you know, obviously we talked about the programs coming up, the maskers and the, the art programs. Um, Dr. Daley, do you want to refresh a little bit?
Yeah, sure. I think a lot of the discussion at that meeting was around the process really for new, for new clubs and proposals. Um, through the last two contracts really, we spent a lot of time defining what extracurriculars look like, how those were funded, what that funding source would be. Um, we didn't really have, there's, there's two things that are being discussed. One is for the elementary school to have a large scale production on the stage, we sort of identified what that would cost and what that would look like. But in the event that they didn't have a large scale production on the stage and it was a smaller scale at their own school, so when I say the stage, I mean at the middle high school performing arts center. Um, so we kind of set parameters for what that would look like and we're currently discussing some ideas around doing something at the elementary level for the spring, um, because some of those students, obviously with the last two years, haven't had some of those opportunities. So hopefully some, uh, some more to come on that very soon.
That would be this spring?
That's the, that's the plan. I don't want to say too much-
Within schools though? All the schools or?
We're talking about some, uh, possibility of sort of a district-wide, similar to all town, um, but, but more for drama for upper-class elementary so that they would all have that opportunity.
Yep.
And then possibly that being a model that we look at moving forward, uh, because it's a big undertaking to have each school try to come up here. Even just the availability of the space has proved to be tricky. We, we thought about doing two schools, one year and then one school the next, so that every year, if you were in either fourth or fifth, you'd have that opportunity. Uh, but the challenge, there are just so many challenges with that model, including just the availability of the pack. So the thought about, uh, you know, Mr. Cloney, I think, helped us come to some thoughts with that at our last meeting about, you know, a district-wide, and so we talked that through. So we have some exciting ideas that may be coming, uh, even sooner for, for students than, than next year. So more to come on that very soon. Um, but there's some proposals that are out there. There are some, um, programs that are running right now, um, and that we would bring forward next year, including a percussion, um, a middle school a cappella, similar to notorious that we talked about earlier tonight for the high school, something from middle school. And so those clubs are operating now sort of on a voluntary basis, uh, because they didn't go through a process, but the idea would be what would that look like for next year. And so we talked a lot about a fee structure. None of us like fees. We don't want to have them. We want to eliminate them.
Right.
However, at the moment, um, the fee structures are the way that we are able to add on and have more opportunities for students. And so, and so right now there's a, a very different model with athletics than there is with performing arts. And so what we, um, talked about, and we would be presenting this more in, in the near future, excuse me, would be the process for, um, changing the performing arts a little bit to resemble more of a season approach where it's if you do one thing, it's this, if it's two, if it's this, having family caps and student caps and all those things in place. Um, but right now it's one fee that catches everything you do and that kind of limits us from being able to offer additional things for students.
Okay.
Yeah, I take-
Excuse me, just one second.
I was just going to say, you know, the good news is that performing arts are thriving and there's a great deal of interest up and down, you know, you know, all the age groups. But the bad news is that, that does create challenges. Um, as always, when it comes to fees, just a reminder that, that for those who struggle to pay fees, there's, there are options and they should be reaching out and asking about those options, uh, for help with that, but, um, yeah.
Any comment?
Sorry, I was just going to say, when you talk about a cap, is that going to be like, uh, so you'll have a fourth cap and a fine art cap, so essentially we could be significantly increasing?
It wouldn't be significantly increasing. We would try to limit that. Um, but we did come up with some numbers. I, I, we, we're not going to present them all tonight, but that's the discuss, so the, the-
It would be a separate cap though. It wouldn't, like if you were paying first-
Correct, yeah.
Like you.
It would be, it would be different. And again, you can't, you know, commitment-wise, not, people aren't going to be able to do everything, um, time-wise, but this, you know, we looked at the numbers and the, the curriculum leaders who brought it forward had the numbers for the students, so we talked about the impact on families. It's, it's significant, but it's not astronomical. We're, you know, we're, we're talking about maybe two more increments, but it, it would, we, we definitely kept in mind, I know that, um, yourself and other parents have talked to us about trying to really work on those caps and those numbers. One shift that would be a part of this would be, you know, the maskers especially right now is part of an activity at the high school. So these are just in the proposals, but to have that more fall under the performing arts and to try to get this more in line with, um, what we see in, in athletics in terms of if you want to do a second thing, there's a second fee, but it's sort of a sliding scale, um, to move down. So that it's not, you're not doubling every time you pay, but, you know, it does cap. But they, you know, the alternative is we don't have the funding to pay the staff that are putting in their time. And I think, um, there is a lot of interest from people to participate and, um, you know, I, I think when we see outside activities and what it costs for that number of weeks, that number of hours to be involved in sports or activities in, in private sector, I think that, um, the fees are, are very reasonable. And as Mr. McGowan said, we would have those, um, sliding scales to support people in need of them, so.
And, and, I mean, my, my comment was actually very similar to Mrs. Cloney's where I do think that, you know, like if you have multiple children in summer athletics, if they're all in athletics, there's just one fee. If there's all in performing arts, it's just one fee. But if they go to both, then it is more. So I do think there should be, should think, consider the universal, a universal cap potentially as, and again, it would be probably more than either of them individually, but I, I do think there's a merit in at least looking at that, just, you know, how it could impact, you know, in, in one year.
Counting, counting of it gets challenging, but-
Yeah, I mean, it, it, I get it. I get there's challenges either way, like how to divide it up between the two, you know, where it goes to and things like that, but, yeah. And, and, what was I going to say? Um, I, I mean, the only other thing is like maybe even thinking about some fundraising specifically for these. Like I think, you know, a concert where, you know, fees go to help support the arts or something, you know, might be a good idea to kind of offset a little bit of this, you know, where you have different performing arts come and, again, just, just an idea, if-
It's a little tricky with what it can be used for, right, for the funds, but we can, we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah, yeah. So, again, I know, it, it's a work in progress. It's just an update from the Subcommittee, so.
But either way, no matter how we, you know, if we're going to offer some opportunities, there needs to be a way to fund the staffing to do it. Um, and we have staff willing to do it. We have many students interested and so we need to have a mechanism for that, so.
And I would just add, I, I would just add, I, I hear a lot of excitement from the curriculum leaders and, uh, it's really nice to see and, you know, they're, they're really excited about the stuff they're working on, so.
We also had finance planning because this meeting got pushed back.
We did, yes. So, um, we, uh, I think, I think I come out of that meeting saying that we have a pretty good base level of where revenues are going to be, which is not great news, and, and where some of our big expense hits are going to be, which is not great news. But I think we're at that stage now where everyone's going to go back and try to squeeze out every dollar of revenue they can, uh, every, uh, on both sides. Uh, and, you know, so we don't yet know what our true deficit is at this point. Um, on paper it's, right now it's pretty high. Um, but it, no sense really talking about that yet because we don't know, we, we need to see what that final number is once everyone comes back, uh, in a couple of weeks with some, hopefully some good ideas.
Right, right.
Well, I'll, I'll go a little bit more detailed.
Please.
I mean, just because, I think we had, I had said at the last meeting, we're about 1.5 million short on the recommended budget and a lot of that was the health insurance and so there is some, an appetite to try to offset some of that. And I believe that's the adjustment that was made to get to the numbers we had in revenue the other day, correct? Michael?
That's correct, yeah.
And so, so basically we were, for the recommended budget, I think we're, what, 1.1 or 1.2 million short still?
1.2.
Yeah. And so, again, that's recommended, that's, and again, we, there was some discussion about other areas that maybe we can fund through free cash, but I, I'll be honest, like the last couple of years when we've done the free cash to fund this at the end of, end of it, that's what got us to balance. It's not going to get us to balance this year. There's not a way to get to balance without cutting and that's the very real concern. And when there's lots of discussions about, you know, whatever, that's my main concern here is that, you know, for years we've seen 50 kids in a grade and we said, let's fund three teachers at 17 a class. And in years past, when we didn't have the funding, we funded two classes at 25. And that's the very real concern where, you know, what I'm worried about. Now, I appreciate that the town, the municipal side, you know, the select board, Mr. Gilberto, you know, Ms. Rourke are very much open to working with us and they have the exact same needs on the town, on the municipal side that we do, but it's, it's hard. It's very hard this year because revenues go up two and a half percent every year and expenses gone up a lot more than that this year, so.
Especially with that health fee, the health insurance.
Health insurance and everything else is just going to be more expensive with inflation and everything else. And so budgets are just higher and it's challenging. It's a challenging year and I think, yeah, we'll see where we get to, but it's a little bit better than last time, but far from good.
There's some progress made.
Okay. Not a Subcommittee, but I have one more quick update on just my, my goal because I heard from the woman from Select Energy today. And so I don't have anything in writing yet, but she did say, looking at just the high school, middle school campus, they think they can get 1.53 megawatts, um, of units on the roof with a, and there'd be an 800 kilowatt battery. Now, in terms of payback for a lease, that would be about 20,000 a year. Now, the only positive advantage would be if they could bundle that with some other buildings in the area to have a bigger package to sell.
Yeah.
That amount could go up. So like our roof could go up to maybe up to about 30,000 if they could bundle. And so they have conversations going with a couple of other school districts around here, um, where they're going to see if they can do that. The other thing that I brought up was, I, I don't think, I'm guessing the hood school roof is too old and the batchelder, but the little school's a brand new roof. I mean, she had, she had looked at that just on the map and said, just looking at it from Google Maps, she thought that could be maybe another, you know, 200 kilowatts or something and, but, but the point is if, if it can be put together as a package in the, in the community, in the area, it could be, each individual amount could be more. And so then if we did the little school as well, that would be an additional amount and if we could bundle it with a few other projects, then again, if we could get the high school, middle school to 30,000 and the little school to something, it could turn into something a little bit more, so.
Well, isn't the hood slight, um, looking to-
Redo, yeah, it's on our capital land.
So is, is that something that could be, um, looked at that as they do it, they prep it for panels as well?
Possibly, yeah, absolutely.
And so would you speak to the person and say, you know-
Depending on when it goes in and like when they're trying to do it, yes.
And this was on RMLD, and when we saw the presentation last year about, about this timeframe, and RMLD kind of laid out the roofs, so they kind of knew that it was going to need to involve a little bit more square footage if we wanted to get to the area that we were hoping for. Um, then more than just the middle school and the high school.
And did, was anyone ever talked about putting it on the berm?
We did.
Yeah, it, it, there wasn't a lot of feasibility for it.
Excited about that?
Or, or was it yielding, um, you know, any high amount of array or that would bring some revenue in, unfortunately. But it was, it was investigated and looked at.
We looked at the parking too.
Yeah, they looked at the parking and that wasn't, and they looked at that again this time. And, and just to remind everybody, the, a couple of years ago, they, Michael did, worked very hard to do a formal request, uh, you know, request and got some bids. The one that we accepted was done wrong and so it ended up not happening. But we've gone all the way through, got approvals through town meeting. Um, we had the request for a proposal out there, which is on, on the website, you see, can see it. And this group was actually won a bid with a consortium that we're a part of.
Right.
So we could actually just work, because we're part of the consortium, we could work with this group with nothing more. So if we, if we like the project, I don't think there's anything more, again, I don't want to say officially on the record, we have to check, but I don't think there's anything more we actually have to do in terms of town meeting request. I don't think there's a formal request that we have to do because we've already done this and it's, we're working within the consortium that we're a part of. So it could be something that we could do when we want to, so. But again, the, the Committee has said in the past, like, we understand there's going to be a little bit of oversight and some risks and so, you know, there has to be some value in doing it that outweighs the risk. And I think it's worth, if this is going to be a multi-year lease, it's worth taking the time to really see if there's a bundle because we can get 50% more by Linfield signing on, you know. It, it's worth having those conversations for the long run, so.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great, that's a great.
Okay. And I don't have anything for, in writing yet, but I sort of pressed and said, I have a meeting on Monday.
Yeah, they actually called me Friday afternoon. I haven't, I forgot to call them back today, actually. I'll try to get reached out to them tomorrow.
Um, anything else in the Subcommittee that we missed?
The next meeting now is next, is this Friday.
For finance?
For finance.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Or budget meeting on Monday.
Yeah, so finance planning meeting is now next Friday.
At 8:45 AM. Athletic Subcommittee is April 13th at 12 PM. Fine Art Subcommittee is at 3:15. Uh, sorry, on May 25th at 3:15. Administrative report, Dr. Daley?
Sure, just a couple of items I wanted to share here. Um, first of all, Dr. Downs was named to the D-LAC, which is the Digital Learning Advisory Council. So under the Massachusetts Virtual School Law requires that there's a D-LAC that includes member representatives from institutions of higher education as, as well as K-12. Dr. Downs has, uh, spent a lot of time at higher ed and also works with Bunker Hill Community College, so his application was very, um, attractive to them. So they, they've named him to that term. I believe that it is a, um, a multi-year term. He starts in March '22 and it goes through March 2025. And so it's a great honor, it's a great connection for him to have. He'll be working with some of the top leading digital learning experts in the state, um, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and also some, uh, private institutions. So it'll just be another good inroad for us, um, with that work. Um, in addition, the, the work that we've done with cybersecurity was recognized on March 8th, um, at a ceremony with Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito, who awarded us with our, uh, grant for cybersecurity for year three. Again, Dr. Downs and I were there, um, and we accepted that award, um, from, from, uh, from the Lieutenant Governor, who's actually the governor of that day. So it's kind of cool, she was acting governor for the day. So, um, it was a nice ceremony that we went to that day. And I thought I'd share, um, another note that will be, I believe in the, in the transcript coming up, but, um, uh, Shivani, who we all know, Shrikanth, uh, also won a Thoreau Scholar Award, um, which is a $25,000 scholarship over four years. So it's, um, in addition to the one that was recognized last meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's pretty exciting.
You say over four years, 25,000 each year or?
It's, um-
Spread out over four years?
I think it's, it's spread out, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I just wanted to share also that I did, you know, in, in response to some of the, you know, the comments that have come at our school committee meetings and also some of the, uh, issues at the middle school that we talked about earlier, I did receive a call from a parent who represents a, a group in town. Um, and we had a small conversation with that parent and some others that she invited, um, to join to really talk about, um, some of the concerns with things that are being heard in the, in the community around, um, issues related to, to race and culture and wanting the schools to really reinforce the importance of, of this work in our community. So as I had shared out a couple of times, um, following, um, those meetings and also the, the issues at the middle school, as we're moving forward with our, um, commitment to our big rocks, one of them being equity, diversity, inclusion, um, we also had our DEI coordinator on that meeting, which was a great start to hear some concerns from the parents who were really concerned about some of what they've heard in public forum and some concerns about what they, they perceive is happening at our schools and really wanting the district to take a strong stance. That language that I used in my email, um, to the district where I said that, you know, even one incident in one word can't go unchallenged or unacknowledged, which is why we took the steps that we did to, to recognize that. There were people that were generally concerned about, um, the safety for their children and, and really wanting to hear from the schools that we take this very seriously. It's, it, it does not need to be a huge incident that's, um, you know, in order for us to take it seriously. So that's really why we addressed it and why we will continue to address it as we have. And so I just wanted to share that with you tonight. And we will continue to have more forms and more education, um, for our community. I think there's a great deal of learning that needs to take place, um, in order to understand better some of the terms that are being thrown around, what's different in Massachusetts, what's different in North Reading. I think it's important to share that, um, you know, as you know, we have a social, um, activism club here at the, at the high school and the, the leader of that group sent me some, um, articles that may be appearing in the transcript. I think it's important to share that tonight, that were shared with me today. Um, and really this is coming from our students. This was completely unsolicited, un, unprompted, but they felt the need to respond to some of what they're hearing in the community, some of the discussion that's been going back and forth in the transcript. And the students wanted to, um, voice some of their thoughts about the importance of, um, what is being discussed in school and why it's important to discuss that in school. You know, and I think, you know, we heard again tonight about the graduation speeches here from a couple of years ago. We don't write those speeches. Those speeches come to us and the students, you know, I think it's important to recognize- Those speeches come to us, and the students, you know, I think it's important to recognize that students certainly have, you know, that, do they have influence? Do they learn from our teachers? Absolutely. But do they come in, are they critical thinkers on their own? And do they have opinions and values of their own that they feel is important to speak and share about? They absolutely do. And I, I think that's part of what this social activism club is representing. So it'll be interesting. I'm not sure whether they'll be printed or not, but that was shared with me today, and I just wanted to share that with the group.
And I, I will just comment quickly and just say, I mean, I appreciate the work you've done in, you know, calling meetings and things like that. But I would just say, I think people can have a difference of opinion, and people can have their own opinions. But at the end of the day, schools have to be a safe and open place, you know? If there's, if there's anything that happens at the school, it needs to be investigated, and it can't happen. And so, I mean, you can differ on opinion, you have your right to your opinion and free speech, but in no way should it be suggested that something shouldn't be investigated or addressed if it happens. And so I just, I can see different opinions on things, but not on, you know, not investigating things that happen, so. Okay. Correspondence, we have correspondence tonight, so, do you wanna speak, or do you want me to speak to it? Which I'm happy to.
Sure, either way, I mean.
Well, I, I mean, we, we all received a, a letter. I, I don't know if the gentleman was here and just left, but, you know, a letter and, and it was an email attaching proposed, my number of things, but it was attaching a propos, a bunch of proposed changes to the athletic handbook. And so I wanna take kind of a step back here, just because, to be honest, and, and specifically asking to be added to a future agenda to discuss it at the school committee meeting. And so, just for educational purposes, I wanna take a step back, and I appreciate Mr. McGowan sending this to me because we were talking about it the other day, and I forgot to do it. But for school committee agendas, the superintendent prepares the agenda. He usually shares it with myself as the chair, and, you know, that is typically what is presented as the agenda. Any member of the school committee can share with either myself or Dr. Daly something that they would like to be put on the agenda, and that will be on the agenda as well. In terms of parents or community members asking for something to be added to the agenda, the way the policy reads is that citizens may, may also request that a subject be placed on an agenda for a school committee meeting, and they do so by submitting their request and writing to the superintendent of schools no less than 10 business days prior to the date of the school committee meeting. Such requests are subject to the approval of the school committee chairperson. And so at the end of the day, you know, the request can come in, and the chair can agree to add it to the agenda or not. But also, any member of the committee that wants to add something to the agenda can add it. So that's just sort of the framework for adding something to the agenda. So I will go and just say that the specific thing that was requested was a lot of changes to the athletic handbook. And so one piece of it was just something that frankly is contrary to Massachusetts law and MIA policy, you know, asking to ban transgender athletes. And so that is something we obviously cannot put in, something that is contrary to Mass law, that is against MIA policy. But there were other changes suggested about, to the handbook. They, they go on for things like, you know, absences, how absences are treated, vacation policies, playing time, game transportation, awarding of varsity letters, you know, cuts to teams and things like that. And I will just say to the request that the handbook is pretty clear that it's the athletic director's handbook that, you know, and it specifically asks for comments, but that goes to the athletic director. Individual residents and parents don't come and say, here's a suggested redlined version of a handbook that I want to discuss at a school committee meeting. And so there is a proper channel for something that is not illegal and against, you know, current state law and, and, you know, policies. And so I would just say to the gentleman that submitted the request, you know, we can, we should forward it if he did not, we should forward it over to the athletic director. He can review it. But a lot of those changes are things that the athletic director comments on. Like I have no idea why the varsity letters are awarded as they are, and so we would need the athletic director's thoughts on that anyways. And so, you know, my, my thought on this is there's nothing to be put on the agenda about that. I think to the extent that there are suggested changes to the athletic handbook, that should be directed to the athletic director. And if he feels that changes are needed, he should make the changes, and we can approve those changes. But that is my, that, that, those are my thoughts on it. I don't know if Dr. Daly or other committee members have a difference of opinion.
Completely agree.
Yep. I, I think you said that pretty well.
That's the first.
I'll just, I'll add just a couple of things. The, the athletic director did receive it. I'll make sure that he, he's also seen the, the most recent version. And if there's things in there that we can address, we can take on. I, I'll just address, just, you know, that there was a line in there about, you know, to support our females, we need to not support our trans. And I think under Mass general law, as you pointed out, trans females are females. And it would be discrimination to consider anything different to that. So I think that's just important to recognize. We, we cannot do things also that would violate collective bargaining. And there's some suggestions in there that would assume that the school committee has the right to, you know, evaluate coaches, as it like, that's not something that's within the school committee's purview. So it's really not, I agree, it's not a school committee issue. It's something that falls to the athletic director and under the, the high school president.
I, I, I read all the changes, and I, I personally don't think there's anything that was like, oh my God, we have to make that change. If there's a question about like how cuts are made or whatever, like I think that's, you, you can raise that as a parent if you want to the athletic director. But I'm also not gonna sit here and say that we're not doing it the proper way. Like, there's only so many students that you can properly, you know, supervise in a team. So like, one of the suggestions was, everybody should be able to make the JV team. Well, if there's 80 kids, you can't have one coach with 80 students. Now, I'm not saying that we get to that point, but when we've talked to the athletic director before, I mean, he wants many students going out for teams. And like, everybody wants students participating in, in sports. And so, again, I, I think that Mr. Johnson has done an excellent job from everything that I've seen every time he's come here. And so I trust him to, you know, hear from a parent that has proposed change on something, and maybe there's something behind it, and we should hear them out. But, again, it's not, it's not an issue that would be on the agenda of the school committee, so. And I, I, I do not plan on putting that request on there. And if no other committee member asks for it to be put on, then I think that it will be referred to the athletic director.
I would add that there are some items in there that are worth considering, and we will talk about them and look them over. I think always hearing from parents and getting their input, and maybe there's a need for some additional, you know, listening on our part to make sure that we're understanding what the root cause of some of the concerns are. I think that's something that I certainly have talked to Mr. Lepret about, and Mr. Johnson, we can certainly do that as well. There's always room for improvement, and we're very open to, to that as well. And I think it, I think it's worth noting, too, there was a, a, a letter to the editor in the newspaper that called for parents to reach out directly to the school. I received one email, and that person was very much in support of everything we've done to this point to support with COVID measures and all the, and all the other things we've done. So that was the only email I received that directly addressed that call out in the newspaper for parents to reach out, so.
Okay. Future business, we have a meeting on April 4th, which is the budget workshop. So I did, I did ask Mr. Connolly in finance planning, like, one of the, one of the reasons we're in this situation with the budget every year is because of the way that the state funding is done through Chapter 70. And so it's not the most exciting topic, but I did ask Mr. Connolly if he wouldn't mind educating us a little bit on that because, to be honest, Mr. Webster, not, not tonight. Mr. Webster always used to comment on how it was done on the foundation budget. But, again, I do think it's important for people in this room, people that wanna be on this committee, frankly, to understand how Chapter 70 works and the foundation budget, and what, you know, when you see things on the governor's budget, to understand it. And so, you know, and even for us, because I couldn't actually explain it very well other than, you know, kind of the outcome of it. So the budget hearing will be on April 4th. Sorry, the budget workshop, I said that wrong. Budget workshop is, is April 4th at 8:45 a.m. The budget hearing is April 11th at 6:30 p.m., so, yes.
I have one more note for the administrative report, that's very important.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the Student Opportunity Act funds, I just wanted to inform you that we have been working on that. As, as you know, that the budget process was redefined in some ways to, to allow additional funding to districts. We do not see a, a great benefit. Our numbers actually worked out to just about the same. It's around the same number, right around just under 70,000. But we, Mr. Connolly and I worked on this and actually had a conference with Desi today to just make sure our, our information was correct. They, they have a check and balance to make sure that the way we're using the funds is in alignment with some of the intended measures to close gaps. And so we've identified our gap closing measure as, one of the identified areas is to have universal pre-K. So I, we asked early on, what if we don't have universal kindergarten? And so they said, yes, you can certainly use it that. So that's how we focused our, it's not, it's not truly an application, but it feels that way when we fill out all these questions and answers, because the money is coming through the formula. But we want their checking and make sure that we're using it in the appropriate way. So we're, we're talking about how we're trying to use our existing money towards the staffing for the kindergarten program, and also described our process to slowly phase in a, a, a method towards universal pre, pre, pre-K. So part of what I do need to do is, is officially inform the school committee that we have done that process. So that's what I'm doing.
We are informed. So again, since I said it poorly before, April 4th, 8:45 a.m. workshop. April 11th is the presentation at 6:30 p.m. Okay, at this point, we are done with the general agenda. Question, Mrs. Clonie?
Well, I have a question, um, totally about the book. Well, first of all, I did wanna let you know, Mr. Butler, if you're hoping to have some of us running and we're saying that April 4th, there is a meeting at the night, about that night, so.
Well, this is 8:45 a.m.
Oh, okay.
This is in the morning, and this is the workshop. I, I meant for the, for the presentation before the school committee at the budget workshop and the, the budget presentation in the evening. I just, again, it's something that we don't always have in there, but I think it's important to understand Chapter 70, so.
No, no, I, I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that we weren't all gonna do this regarding your discussion.
Good. No, I, I would love to hear the candidate night if people are having it. So please, let us know, too, so.
Perfect.
We are voters as well.
I just wanted to say, it is important for our transgender, non-binary, those students that we not just say, we're sorry, we can't fix this because of the law, that we be clear that that isn't our, and I think that's your viewpoint, but that we be clear to them that it's not because of the law that we're not protecting them. We're, we're protected, you know, that we're protecting them, it's because of that, so I just think it's important.
Absolutely, yeah. I hope I, I hope I made that clear. If I didn't, I, I will say it myself.
But, but the other, the other piece of that, though, is when somebody's specifically requesting to be added to the agenda on something, even if we don't agree with them, sometimes we just have to say, we literally can't add certain things to the agenda because they are illegal. And so, you know, just like, just like when somebody wants, like, if somebody wants to say something that I don't agree with, I don't have any right to not let them say it. But I, we can't vote on some, put, to put something in that is contrary to law. And so that was the point of, because there was a formal request to add something to the agenda that we had to specifically address, so.
No, and I just, when I say that, I just mean, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
By talking it, but I, when I say that, I mean, like, with the incident with the something being written on the wall, we didn't say, we can't let that happen because there's laws against it. Like, it's important that we just be clear that, no, and you can, I, I'm totally fine with setting the law as well, but I also think that it's important to make sure that those, you know, the transgender, non-binary, those kids know that we, we, those policies aren't just because we don't have a choice. We have, even if we got a choice, we would support them, meaning.
Yeah, and we, and we have, even before the laws were in place. And, you know, I, I do think that there is a, a conversation nationally. We're seeing it play out in the Supreme Court hearings, right, around records and around scholarships. I think there's conversation that will continue. I'm sure that there, there will be discussions there. I think there's many ways to address those concerns without discrimination. And, and so I think that that's really important that, as, as was said, that we continue to support our trans students and recognize that, you know, not allowing them to participate is not the answer to, to these concerns.
And at this time, we will not officially adjourn because we need to go into executive session. We'll take a five-minute recess because I need to go to another room. And we are not kicking you out, but we are telling you, you can't be in this room in five minutes, so.
But, so just.
The location's actually.
Oh, we're gonna move, are we gonna move? Oh, we're gonna go, okay, you can stay, we're gonna leave, so.
And we're only, and we're only gonna come back just to, I, I think this will be part of that.
Well, if we were coming back here, I was gonna take an adjournment for five minutes and then do the motion to go into.
So let's do the motion.
We'll do the motion now if we're gonna move here, yes. So I will.
Yes, adjourning is for some that you're reading.
Correct. Yeah, we'll, I will, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining with a labor union, and litigation matters.
So moved, second.
Okay, and we have to do a specific roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Five zero, we are going to executive session.